Meeting to order for the Lake Mills City Council on February 6, 2024. Misty, can you do a roll call, please? Misty, are you there?
You're muted right now.
Uh-oh.
I suppose I can do it.
Okay, sounds good.
Steve Fields?
Here.
Kathryn Bishop?
Here.
Greg Waters?
Here.
Michelle Quinnow?
Here.
Lisa Kerler?
Here.
Thanks, Drake. So, please rise and do the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And can, Misty, can you hear us? I just want to make sure that you're able to...
Yes, I can. I'm sorry, I was asked to make some photocopies.
That's all right. Anyone that just arrived, we do have some extra copies of the agenda in the back now. Thank you for that. Okay. Our next agenda item is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So, we have three documents that are posted with the agenda: city council minutes from January 16th, Parks Board minutes from December 20 of 2023, and the ad hoc committee on urban forest management minutes from December 13 of 2023. Are there any comments on any of these minutes? Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, Ms. Kerler, the Parks Board minutes for December 20, 23, were not yet approved, so I would ask to remove those from this agenda.
Okay, so if those weren't approved, we can carry those over maybe to the next meeting, make sure that we have the final Parks Board approval on that. So, we have the city council minutes and the urban forestry management ad hoc committee minutes. Any questions or comments on either of those two? Okay, so we'll accept those two into the record. Our next agenda item is correspondence. Mr. Fields, how'd you like to start?
All right. Had a couple emails on the Cottage Go Hotel or Inn asking us to reconsider or to look at this closely. Also had a couple emails on the Rock Lake Activity Center. I attended the fire department's award banquet and then also took a tour of the Rock Lake Activity Center with some of the staff there.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, I had some emails regarding the last Parks Board meeting and the mill pond and studying the mill pond further. I had a specific question about property assessments on the mill pond as opposed to the lake. I had emails both for and against the Cottage Hotel renovations, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
Yes, I also attended the fire department banquet. Got some good feedback. I was visiting the Knickerbocker Ice Festival as well. Had memos on the salt impact on freshwater lakes, several emails on the Cottage Hotel apartments, a memo on write-in voting, and those discussions at that Knickerbocker-composed Sandy Beach Restaurant, wastewater treatment plant century, since I was right there, and EMS services.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Sorry. I also received the emails for and against Cottage Street Apartments and received correspondence regarding the lake levels.
Great, thank you. I have, I think, similar to what everyone else described, I also had a chance to attend the Knickerbocker festivities. There was lots of people out and about on Saturday, so that was wonderful to see. In addition to what other people described, I did receive a press release from the Rock Lake Activity Center and Lake Mills Community Center Collaborative that they're working together toward a community center project. And I received a couple of applications for the Board of Review. We have several vacancies on that board that I'll be bringing appointees forward in the next couple of meetings so that those people can serve in May. And that's it. Okay, our next agenda item is questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on agendas that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and please fill out the sign-in sheet provided at the podium. If there's anyone attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature so that we know that you're interested in speaking. And I do see some folks online tonight. Are any of those people interested in providing public comment? Okay, doesn't look like anyone is, so if there's anyone here in the room that would like to speak, please come on up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Susan Trier, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rock Lake Improvement Association, which is a nonprofit, all-volunteer, membership-driven association dedicated to protecting Rock Lake for the last 50 years. Our membership of 215 families comprises both town and city residents, and our address is P.O. Box 255, Lake Mills. RLIA, or the Rock Lake Improvement Association, continues to strongly advocate for the city council to request that the Wisconsin DNR change the current water level order governing Rock Lake. Your subcommittee, the Joint Rock Lake Committee, also requested a change. If the council simply supports operating at the current water level order maximum level during spring, significant precipitation in May will still be required to meet summer prescribed levels. Current trends show a reduction in May precipitation shifting instead towards April. Summer levels cannot be attained by simply operating at maximum spring water level order parameters. At least 4.8-inch rise in lake levels will be required beginning May 2 to meet minimum summer levels. In contrast, Rock Lake's proposal suggests capturing earlier spring precipitation and allowing for a rise to summer levels beginning on April 16 instead of May 2. D.L. Anderson is one of the pier and boat lift installers operating on Rock Lake. They told RLIA that Rock Lake was hit harder by the low water levels than any other lakes they service, including Lake Wisconsin, Lake Mendota, Lake Manona, Lake Wabisa, Lake Kunginza, and even Lake Ripley. They definitely had more issues servicing Rock Lake. It's interesting to note that all of these lakes, including Lake Ripley, reached summer levels at some point in 2023. There may be a variety of issues facing Rock Lake in reaching prescribed summer recreational levels. Being able to capture more spring precipitation and allowing an earlier rise to summer levels is undeniably an important step. In order to support a change to the water level order, the Wisconsin DNR has requested an environmental study, which focuses on the potential impact to the wetlands surrounding Marsh Lake. During your next council meeting on February 20, the Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department will discuss the study in detail and how they propose to meet the Wisconsin DNR requirements. We are asking you to support the study, and we are asking you to request the Wisconsin DNR to modify the current water level order. Thank you for giving us a chance to share our views with you, and thank you for your service to the community. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Trier? And thank you, that was right up to three minutes. I appreciate that because I see a number of people have signed up.
Hello, City Council. My name is Mary Schmager, 327 South Ferry Drive. Thank you, City Council, for your commitment to the well-being of the city of Lake Mills. I was pleased also to learn about Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department joining your next city council meeting on the 20th of February. As you know, the riparian owners in the city of Lake Mills pay premium taxes. We pay roughly three times more than homeowners in Brookstone and the Ridge as just a reference, and I'm not complaining at all about this premium. Actually, I'm elated that we have been gathering additional funds to support the health of Rock Lake. As such, I'm advocating for support for both the direction and funding required to pursue the recommendations that were brought forward by both the Joint Rock Lake Committee and the Rock Lake Improvement Association, that Susan had alluded to just a second ago, actually. As riparian property owners, our property values depend heavily on two things: one, the quality of the water in Rock Lake, and two, the lake levels. A relatively small amount of water can make a very big difference for many homes on South Ferry due to our shallow watershed. So, inches, an inch, makes a big difference for the utilization of our piers, our boats, and watercraft. So, the studies required to address the proposed change to the water level order to capture earlier spring rains are essential. We need to ensure our home values are maintained, the management of our pier systems, which are optimized to the summer median water level, are enabled without additional investment and disruption to the lake, although many riparian owners have been purchasing extra pier sections to try to address the low water levels to date, and that the quality of the lake remains at the high health level that it currently is at. I would appreciate your support for the study and ask you to request the Wisconsin DNR to modify the current water level order to capture earlier spring rains. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schmager? Okay, thank you.
My name is Steve Quant, and again, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it very much. Last September, when D.L. Anderson came to remove my boat lifts and put them in their normal position on the lawn, water levels were so low that they couldn't get their boat, their barge, close enough to the shoreline to place the lifts on my lawn properly. Because I was on vacation and not home when that happened, the workers, without my knowledge, transferred my two lifts to Sandy Beach for winter storage. About a month later, in addition to the normal haul-out fee, D.L. Anderson charged a $300 transportation fee for moving the lifts. I presume I'm going to be charged another $300 to get my lifts back. And to add more insult to injury, I recently was told that storage fees at Sandy Beach are $100 per lift. Normally, when I store my lifts on my own lawn, my total cost, in-and-out costs, are $700. This year, my total winter costs will be $1,500, $800 more than they've ever been in the 45 years that I've lived on Rock Lake. During those 45 years, I believe water levels have been amazingly stable. During those 45 years, we've had periods of abundant water, and we've had droughts. I only recall one period of time when we had high water that was high enough to issue a slow no-wake order, and that was lifted within two weeks. Low water conditions have also been rare. For the first time ever in 2021, I adjusted my boat lifts to go as low as they could possibly go because we had low water levels. This past year, I removed my boats from their lifts on August 18 because as fast as water levels were dropping then, I feared that I might not be able to float my boats off the lifts. In 45 years, I have never hauled my boats out in August. We cannot control the amount of water or moisture that Mother Nature drops on us. We can, however, control the amount of water that we allow to be discharged from the dam site. The DNR tells us exactly what the maximum water levels can be, and they also tell us the minimum amount of water that must be discharged into Rock Creek. The city controls both of those measures. We know how to let water out of the lake; we have no idea how to put water back in it. So, based on what we experienced this past summer, I think we've learned that we cannot lose a single drop of water from Rock Lake that we're entitled to. I implore you to daily, daily, report and measure the amount of water that passes above the dam and through it. We need to treat and protect this resource as the precious treasure that it is. By statute, you've been charged to do just that. Please, please, help us retain every ounce of water we're entitled to have. You've seen and you've heard that there are serious economic and environmental consequences for not paying attention to Rock Lake water levels. Something is changing fast. We're weaker, we're weeks away from ice-out on Rock Lake. As stewards of Rock Lake and as custodians of the dam, the city needs to change the way it has previously operated. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Quant. Any questions?
Thank you.
Steve, I did have one brief question. You mentioned that your boat lifts were transferred to Sandy Beach without your knowledge. Do you know if the contractor coordinated that with the city to utilize Sandy Beach for placing boat lifts? Do you happen to know?
I understand after the fact they did, yes.
Okay.
I have no idea how, I mean, it was a surprise to be, I was gone, and when I came home, I said, "Where are my lifts?" I expected them to be on the lawn.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
I live at 148 Lecture Drive. I've lived there for 53 years, and in those 53 years, I've seen the highs and lows that supposedly the city and the dam is supposed to manage. Unfortunately, I think that you have fallen short in that duty several times over those years. I'll give you some examples. In the high-water area, you're charged with cleaning out the debris before it gets to the dam every day. That's the charge from the DNR. I personally have cleaned out the debris 40, 50 times. I've got my rake, brought it down to the mill pond, and cleaned it out because the water was too high, our piers were floating away, there were fish on our pier. That's an example. On the other end of the spectrum, you've maintained, in my opinion, the minimum level set by the DNR rather than the medium is what you're supposed to do. And what happens is that on drought year, obviously, we can't control the rain, but we can control some of the goings-on with the levels of the water. I'll give you a perfect example of the frustration. One particular Friday afternoon several years ago, the water level was low. I checked, and we were at the minimum, and the flow out the dam was very large. I went down to the city office and said, "Hey, we've got to close the dam because we're letting out water, and we're still, we're at the minimum." I was told that the fellow that controls the dam is gone for the weekend, so the outflow below the minimum continued on throughout that weekend and was finally changed sometime on Monday. I think the city needs to do a better job. This is not rocket science. Try to think what's going on as far as the people that are on the lake, and when it's forecast for the next month to be dry, don't go to the minimum. Go to the medium. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Zastro. Any questions from council members? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Okay, Scott?
Hello, City Council. My name is Scott Telefson. I live at 115 Brewster Drive. I'm a member of Rotary. I'm on the board, and I'm also one of the organizers for pickleball in our community. And we recently finished fundraising for pickleball courts in Lake Mills, surfacing the courts with a paint and texture-type surface at Rotary Park, and we're prepared to donate $15,800 to the city for that project. We achieved that level of fundraising over, I think it was, two months, which I thought was pretty quick. It was all grassroots fundraising, hosting events, individual donations, and a couple grants. And last year, we also fundraised for nets that will also be installed at Rotary Park. And so, we'd like to thank the community for supporting the project thus far, and also thank Eric Schreiner for his help in getting this going. Started over two years ago discussions to get that going at Rotary. So, there's a ton of demand for pickleball in our community. We use an app to organize our group and our play, and we have over 200 members just for Lake Mills Pickleball. And I can promise you, throughout the summer, there'll be people on that court almost every day, and some mornings, like Saturday mornings, there could be 40 to 50 adults there playing. So, lots of demand, and it's only going to increase. Four courts there is going to be great for a while, and maybe we might need more. All these improvements, these donations, have been community-funded thus far, so I'd just like to put something in your ear for the future, and we hope to advocate for further improvements through the city budgeting process in a future year, that being lighting, outdoor lighting, and some fencing. But today, it's just the donation of that money for the surfacing. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we've got that donation on our agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment tonight? And just to verify, anyone online if you would like to speak, type something into the chat so that we know you're interested. Okay, seeing no further people interested in commenting, we'll close the questions and public comment and move on to our next agenda item. So, the next item is the city manager's report. Drake, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. A written report was included in your packet. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for the city manager tonight? Okay, if not, we'll move on to council business then. Our first item under council business is Resolution 24-7, which is appreciation of service for Leona Bauer. And I actually didn't see if Leona was here tonight. But, Misty, can you please read the title of that resolution for us?
City Council Resolution 24-7: An appreciation of the public service of Leona Bauer to the city of Lake Mills.
Okay, thank you very much. It's our tradition to read the resolutions out loud, so I will do that. And Drake, can you confirm we don't have Leona here in person tonight?
I don't believe so. Eric, Director Schreiner may have some. Did you want to speak at all on her behalf?
Would you like to, would you like to speak before we do the resolution? Okay, yeah, please come. Come forward.
Motion to approve?
Sure, if you want to do it in that order, that's fine, too.
Motion to approve Resolution 24-7: Appreciation of Service of Leona Bauer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters, second by Mr. Fields for Resolution 24-7. Director Schreiner?
As the resolution states, Leona is an absolutely wonderful person, and I could not be more proud of her for her retirement. In fact, she's still looking for more work post-retirement, but she is one of the most humble people that I've ever met, and I absolutely value her work ethic, and it's, she's an absolute role model for myself. And I think oftentimes custodians have a lot of behind-the-scenes work that is, that they do, and sometimes a lack of appreciation or understanding what it is that their job really entails. But Leona was absolutely a portion of the oil that kept these facilities up and running. And if she is not back in the building, I will greatly miss her, and I think she did a phenomenal job to support the city facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. All right, I'll read the resolution out loud, and then if anyone else would like to make a comment, we can do that. So, City Council Resolution 24-7: In appreciation of the public service of Leona Bauer to the city of Lake Mills. Whereas Leona Bauer has served nearly 10 years, providing diligent and thorough custodial services to the municipal building and other facilities of the city of Lake Mills, and whereas Leona Bauer's effort and attention to detail in the performance of her duties made the city facilities shine, and whereas Leona Bauer's obvious pride in her work, despite being behind the scenes and often taken for granted, created a lasting contribution and a proud example of public service. And whereas Leona Bauer's resolute attention to detail, constant professionalism, and diligence, and excellent customer service to the citizens of the city of Lake Mills and patrons of the municipal offices has contributed to the overall betterment of the city of Lake Mills, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career accomplishments of Leona Bauer and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement. Resolved the 6th day of February 2024. Any council members that would like to make a comment before we vote? Mr. Waters?
Yes, I always seemed to meet Leona in the stairwell on rainy days, and I always felt guilty about walking in and tracking water, and she was always very pleasant and did a wonderful job, and she was very delightful to talk to, and I wish her the best in her retirement.
Thank you. Any other? Mrs. Bishop?
I did. Well, I wish she was here tonight because this building is always really clean, the bathrooms are spotless, and I've actually heard staff say, "Leona can clean it up, she can get that fixed," whatever it was. So, really appreciate that and that dedication.
And I'll just add my appreciation for Leona's work. If I see any dirt or something spilled, the next time I'm around, it's not there anymore. She's obviously very quick and responsive, and I've certainly seen her here late evenings and just quietly going about her work, so that is greatly appreciated, and we do want to, we do recognize her for that and thank her for that. So, I hope she gets a chance to watch this since she's not here this evening. So, can, Misty, can we have a roll call? Vote on Resolution 24-7.
Ms. Kerler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And if we could just have a round of applause, so in case she watches this. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item, letter B, is Resolution 24-8, the donation from the Rotary Club. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-8: Accepting a donation from Rotary Club in the amount of $15,800 for the installation of permanent pickleball court surfacing at Rotary Park.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-8: Accepting the donation from the Rotary Club in the amount of $15,800 for the installation of permanent pickleball court surfacing at Rotary Park.
Second. Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Mr. Schreiner, do you want to talk to us about this?
Let me start off. Is there any specific questions regarding this donation?
How did they raise it so quickly?
That was my, I made numerous comments as far as Scott Telefson's and Rotary's behalf as well as individual pickleball players. They did a phenomenal job in fundraising, and it was pretty substantial, the amount of money that they raised and the amount of time that they did. Now, the difference is going to be funded by operational funds or leftover capital funds, but obviously, $15,800 versus $18,000 quote is a pretty substantial chunk of that actual portion of the surfacing. So, congratulations to the people who did do the fundraising efforts. It's phenomenal to see that input, and I think these facilities are going to have a drastic amount of increased use because of the accessibility that'll be there with both the permanent nets as well as the surfacing that's going to be installed. The one thing I may add is approximate installation. We are shooting for the month of May. We're hoping for, at the earliest, the beginning of May, and at the latest, the end of May as far as installation, depending on weather conditions that the surfacing needs to cure. So, we are shooting for beginning of summer, so we have the majority of summer for operation out there.
Fantastic. Ms. Quinnow?
Oh, I was just going to say that...
Oh, I was just going to say that, based on our listening session, the turnaround for the pickleball thing was very good. So it's wonderful to see that this is happening so quickly.
Like I said, a lot of congratulations due for the people who fundraised the funds for this.
Mr. Waters?
I believe in the notes when I was studying, it was four pickleball courts, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to outline that real quick. Thank you.
Any other further questions at all?
I don't think I have any question, but I was going to just add a comment. As Mr. Telfson described, there was a previous donation of nets, and then with the surfacing, these are going to be really professional-looking and I think are going to be a really nice feature for our community. And I've been to nicely-done pickleball courts in other nearby communities, and I'm just imagining how nice these are going to be, having seen that. And there is something that really assists the play in having the particular colors and painting surfaces as opposed to just, you know, some standard-striking. So I think that's going to be a real asset, and it'll probably draw people from outside our community here as well.
I think I am on the hook now to learn how to play pickleball.
Mr. Waters?
One other quick note, Ms. Bishop, I believe this was approved at the Parks Board?
Yes, that's correct, and the memo should be included here in the package.
Okay, great.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, so the Parks Board reviewed this as well and supported the accepting the donation. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Okay, if not, let's proceed to a roll call vote on Resolution 24-8, which is acceptance of a donation from the Rotary Club for pickleball court resurfacing in Rotary Park.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott, and to the Rotary and all the donors for their contributions to make this possible. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a presentation, discussion, and possible decision on the architectural firm for design bidding and construction administration of the Sandy Beach Restaurant Facility. We have a number of documents, including the proposals that we saw at our last meeting, and prepared motion and the presentations, and I believe our architects are here tonight as well. So Drake, do you want to kick things off?
So we received two proposals, one from Thrive Architects and one from Galbraith Carnahan Architects. They both have prepared presentations for us tonight and are prepared to answer questions that the council may have. I did distribute earlier today and passed out a prepared motion. If the council decides to take action tonight, it's a, there's a checkbox in it for a choice of which one the council would like to go with, but other than that, if we just want to proceed to the presentations, I don't have anything further to add at this moment.
Okay, thank you. So we have a prepared motion that lists Option 1, Thrive Architects, and Option 2, Galbraith Carnahan Architects, which I assume are just listed in random order, so we'll just go in that order. And if we could have the folks from Thrive come up first and introduce yourselves, and go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. Jeremy Bartlett, I'm the owner of Thrive Architects. I started the firm eight and a half years ago, actually out of my house. And within a year, I grew and moved into this wonderful building that you see here in Waukesha. A few years later, I was able to purchase the building and continue to grow. And about two and a half years ago, opened an office in Appleton. We have two employees in Appleton. We recently opened office in Madison, and I have one employee in Madison. In total, we have ten employees that are on staff, and we have thirteen total. We have three people that are contracted directly to us exclusively. Tonight, I'd like to briefly introduce our team, talk about, they'll each talk a little bit about their experience and their involvement in the project, and then we're going to touch base on a few project examples. We brought some different projects tonight, because we listened to your comments from the previous and wanted to respond to some of that. So you'll find some of the projects we brought tonight were in your packet, and some of them are new. So I guess to start off, I will hand the mic over to Brent from Applied Technologies, and he can explain his role in the project.
Good evening. My name is Brent Gibson. I'm a senior structural engineer for Applied Technologies. I will be doing the actual structural on the project, and on behalf of Applied Technologies, we'll also be doing the civil engineering as well. Applied Technology has been around for about forty years now, and we are a full-service engineering consulting business that has lots of experience doing work in this area as well. And then I guess I'll pass it on to Colleen.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Colleen Hoffman. I'm with IBC Engineering Services. A little bit about IBC Engineering. We are a MEP engineering design firm with locations in Waukesha, Wisconsin, also a location in Illinois, and one in Florida. We've been in business for over thirty years, providing design and commissioning MEP services. One of our founding principles and our guiding design principles is we are very interested in pursuing energy-efficient and sustainable designs. It's been kind of our motto since before it became a popular buzzword. So that's kind of one of the things that we've hang our hats on. However, we do realize that not every project has sustainability and energy efficiency as its project goals. So we pride ourselves on listening to our clients to make sure that we provide an MEP design that's in alignment with the client's project goals. And I will be serving as the MEP project manager for this project.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Stowe. I'm an associate principal with Thrive Architects, and I work out of the Madison office. Should we be chosen for this project, I would most likely be the project manager, just due to the vicinity of the project. I joined Thrive last year. Prior to that, I've known Jeremy for over twenty years, and we worked together at a past firm before joining Thrive. So I'm glad to join the team here.
Dave Raschka, also with Thrive Architects, also an associate principal. I've been a licensed architect for just about eight years, and I joined Jeremy about seven years ago. Him and I had some previous experience at another office, but my role in this is I tend to be the lead designer for our office. So on the front end, I'll be assisting Jeff with getting the design set before it moves into construction documents.
Hi, my name is Ashley Pollacks. I've been with Thrive for just under five years now. Similar to Dave, I'll be assisting with the design of the project. I'd also be running the 3D renderings and any imagery that the project requires. So that's kind of my role.
Additionally, we have landscaping in our services, surveying and geotechnical, as is required in the proposal. If we could go to the next slide, I would like to have Dave come up and I think talk a little bit about two projects that are, that have some relative experience to what we're proposing with you.
Nice. Okay. So I'm just going to briefly talk about a couple of projects that I worked on with Thrive that are relevant to what Lake Mills is looking for, for the Sandy Beach project. So this first one here, this is a Bass Bay Brew House. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's a supper club venue in Muskego. It's on Bass Bay, which is connected to Muskego Lake. What you're seeing in these pictures here, it's a two-story facility. Actually, the lower level that you see in the picture on your right is a kind of a supper club venue. The upper floor is two different reception halls for weddings and banquets and events and that type of thing. So we've done multiple projects with the owner of Bass Bay, spanning over, most of the time that I've worked there, probably seven years now. And what you're seeing here, the image on the top left, it's kind of a unique site. Let me take a step back. So the way this restaurant is set up, it's set kind of into a hill. It does sit right on the bay, so it has beautiful views of the surrounding area and the lake. But it is a little bit hard to navigate. So when you approach from the north, you're only seeing the single story, which is the wedding venue. So he relies a lot on signage and kind of wayfinding to navigate people around to the lakeside and where the restaurant is. So this first image on the top left was a new entry that we had designed for him that would face the northern side. It's more prominent, so when you drive up, it serves its own wayfinding with the geometry and the height of it. So it helps people navigate to know where they're supposed to go and how to get around on the site. These other two images on the bottom are later projects that we did. These are of the patio space in between the restaurant and the lake. So he wanted to have some expanded seating, gives him capacity for some of the summer and warmer months. Also, you know, if you go there on a Friday night for a fish fry, you're going to wait an hour or two hours to get a table sometimes. So this provides extra space where people can have appetizers, they can have drinks while they're waiting to get a table inside. You can kind of see in the corner here, there's a covered bar with a pergola element that we designed over it with some fire pits. But again, the focus was really to take, he's got this great space in between the restaurant itself and the lake frontage, which you can see there on the lower-left picture. So really trying to maximize that and give amenity space to incorporate and connect to the lake better. We can go to the next slide, I think. Okay, so this is another project in Muskego. This was Milk Ham Burgers. This was, the top-left picture, you'll see this is actually an Arby's. And one of the more challenging project types, in my experience, is taking an existing building, especially a national brand that's recognized when you drive up and you know what it is, and convert it into another use. And so this was a fast casual burger and custard restaurant. The owner was looking for kind of a rustic farmhouse kind of a look with a little bit of a modern aesthetic to it. So you can see where we covered a lot of the exterior. We modified some of the storefront to give it his own signature look and try and take away from the Arby's-ness of the restaurant. You see a lot of wood materials and a lot of exposed metal. One of the interesting features here in the lower right, you'll see there was some wall sconces on the exterior that we actually, we came up with a design for doing a corrugated metal wrap. So the corrugated metal matched a lot of the decor, the awnings and the interior elements, and then we were able to bring that in for the lighting elements as well. It's kind of tied everything together. I think I'll hand it off to Jeremy next.
Okay, so in the next slide. So I wanted to respond a little bit, this wasn't in our packet originally, but one of the comments was that you're doing a brand-new building, and we provided a lot of things that were existing buildings and existing structures. So I want to throw a couple of new buildings in. This is a new building concept that we're working on in Oshkosh right now, and it is going to definitely be one of the first of the kind in the Fox Valley. It might be one of the first of the kind in Wisconsin. The idea behind it is completely contactless. So fast food concept that you either order online, or you, and you can come then and pick up at a separate window, or you can do touchscreen on your own. And there all exists in this building is staff areas and a kitchen. And the idea is, obviously, where things have been going with dining is quick and fast casual, right? And so this kind of combines that into never getting out of your car and getting your meal and getting home. So this is a brand-new concept. Like I said, it's coming in Oshkosh, and we're working out of our Appleton office. Next slide. This was a brand-new building that we recently completed in Pewalki, and this was, we did, this is exactly like your project in the sense that we did the white box. So we built this building prior to knowing what restaurants were going in and how it was going to, how it was going to end. And what ended up happening was First Watch ended up being contracted to come in and put in the restaurant, and through that, there's obviously a little bit of massaging in the design, once that happened. There was some space left over, and Crumble Cookies came in to sign the back half of that. So through the process, we had already been under construction, and we had gotten all the approvals and designed it really that nearly any restaurant could come in to operate in this space, but obviously it works really well for First Watch. I'll hand it over to Ashley.
So this is Toppy's Table. It's in downtown Waukesha. It's a very popular restaurant that we actually did the remodel for, and they were looking to expand into a nearby office building. This office building was originally a service station, so we were bringing back some of the original elements with the garage doors, and it's on a very prominent corner in downtown Waukesha. They, with us, they wanted an outdoor patio area, so we have these shade sails with gas fire pit tables, a new canopy, entrance canopy. It's just a real prominent corner, so we wanted to do something a little special there. You can go to the next slide. Another Waukesha project. Hopefully, a lot of you are, have seen this before. Very tragic event happened November 21st, 2021. There was a design competition. We were selected for the design that you see here. So it's kind of a two-part project. On the top right, or I guess the right side of your screen, is the Main Street Memorial. This was a smaller memorial that kind of tied, had like visual connections to Grady Park, which is on the left side. The Main Street Memorial was completed just this past November. We partnered with Scathane to pull that off on time. It was a very, very special project. Grady Park still in the works, but 2020, or I should say, November 20th this year, we can expect for that park to be open. It's a formal plaza set in a very natural park with surroundings along the river, and we have a heart sculpture in the center that symbolizes Waukesha Strong. I'll hand it off to Jeff.
As Jeremy was stating, this was another project where it was a shell building that I was contacted for by a developer I worked with to put in a couple different restaurants, and this is in Brookfield, Wisconsin. It was divided into two phases. The first phase is the Max and the Einstein Bagels on the right, and then the second phase was a mixed-use development. There's another fast casual restaurant in there along with some other retail clients. We'll skip ahead to the next slide. And this was a project I did before joining Thrive on my own with the firm I was at, and this is the Water Street Brewery Project, and I was the architect for that. This is in Oak Creek, Wisconsin, and we took basically a vacant lot. I worked with the restaurant owner and brewer to develop a prominent corner in Oak Creek that used to be the AC Delco plant, and the theme for our presentation to the client, they want to make their restaurant unique to the community they come in. So we tried to reflect the industrial past of Oak Creek and the site with a turn-of-the-century industrial take with a modern restaurant on the interior. It was a very fun project to work with, start to finish. I'll turn it back over to Jeremy.
Okay, so that's a good lead into what will we do here? Design principles and what were our thoughts? We don't have any preconceived ideas. That always comes from meeting and discussing the project overall. But some of the things that we've definitely taken away already is the use of materials, perhaps washed stone, symbolic of what we see on Rock Lake, and wood features, wood elements, water elements, sand textures. We'd like to design a strong connection to the surrounding landscape. The, I think natural light is always important, especially important in restaurants. The name here The, the name here for sparkling waters could be something that we, that we introduce, could be a theme in the restaurant. I think we could tap into the history. One of the things in my research was the former toboggan water slide that was at, at this park. And you thought, oh, what's that have to do with our restaurant? Well, maybe not the toboggan itself, but the framing. So what I find really interesting is the actual supporting elements and the patterns and the, and the language and the relationships. Perhaps that could be posts or themes inside the restaurant, or maybe it's framing inside the ceiling. Obviously, we would want to consider the flexibility for future users, address deliveries, staffing, you know, think practical, think about kitchen and utility locations. Our engineers will be very supportive in, in, in all those elements and keep us on track on the practicality and, and direction. And obviously, the, the fiscal side of this, there's a budget to work with, we're very cognizant of it. The proposal's written in such a way that it puts the onus on us to come in and budget. The onus is on us, if we don't come in budget, it's, it's our cost to redesign. So we're, we're very cognizant of that. I, I, I think the other things that, that are obvious is that you want to have a strong connection to the outdoors, sit on the lake. And in the concepts that were put together, there was some rooftop views and some patio connections, and, and I think that, that'll be important in the design. So if we could go to the next slide, I just want to talk a little bit, I don't want to get deep into the project process, we, we definitely covered that on a multitude of things that we've submitted and in, and in your RFP. But there was a few questions that came up or comments, and I just wanted to hit on those real quick. So we'll have the schematic design phase, as I mentioned, and in that phase, we'll be collaborating to come up with the, the design ideas. In that process, we included six meetings. We think that that's an efficient amount of meetings, and we had to start somewhere, to be honest with you. I believe that in six meetings, we'll be able to develop a complete project design, start to finish, and be able to get through the city process. The, the, after we work through the design and schematic phase, we'll work into the construction document phase, and we will have quality assurance and peer review through that phase, 30, 60, and 90, to keep us on budget, on time, and to, to deliver a successful project. From there, we'll go to bidding and project award. We'll assist in, in getting the project out on the street, getting awareness of the project. I think that's always, the, the big bidding climate, to be really brutally honest, the bidding climate has been terrible the last two, two years roughly. Not only have costs accelerated very quickly due to inflation, as everyone's aware, but interest in projects has been drastically down. Public projects haven't been very, very, there hasn't been a lot of demand out there and a lot of competition. We are starting to see a little bit of change in that this year. It's tightened up a little bit. I think as the interest rates remain high and as work slows down a little bit, we'll see more, more companies coming back into this space. Because of where our offices are, being in Madison, being in Waukesha, and having projects throughout the area, I think we have a lot of connections to contractors that we can hopefully engage and, and bring in. The, the closest of which, right now, we're working in Watertown, the city, and we're doing a project for the city of Watertown. I did include some of our government work in our package, just as experience, so that you knew that we knew that process and how, 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 how to put government bid package and deliver a project. So that, lastly, that takes us to the construction administration. We anticipated one site visit per month, but noted 12 months. I think that's a really extended long time. I think that the project will go faster than that. So what you'll really have is you'll probably have close to two meetings per month that will be onsite doing construction administration. So this approach and understanding is relatively repeating or emphasizing what I just mentioned, because I knew that these were comments that were made about, about, at the last council hearing. The last thing I wanted to touch on, and what I had brought along today, was just the idea of new construction versus remodeling and challenges. I would say it almost always is, is more difficult to take an existing structure and transform it than it is to work from a new, new slate. On the bottom, I gave an example, we turned that really ugly gas station into that Starbucks on the right, and that is the same building. We, we tore off the car wash and we, 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 we came up with a whole new, whole new appearance for the building. So to have that imagination and, and be able to work within constraints is something that I think our entire team excels with. Everyone on the team I've, I have a long relationship with. I, I will go, I could go into personal things, I went to college with Brent, I, as Jeff mentioned, we worked together at a previous firm. Dave and I worked together at the same previous firm. Almost everyone on our team is, has a, has a long relationship working together. So we were all friends, I guess, before we were working together. So not to drag this out any longer, I guess I'd like to turn it over to you, if you have any questions that we can answer.
Any council members have questions for the Thrive team? Not at this time? Okay.
No, I think, oh, I thought you said you had.
He said not at this time.
I apologize, okay. I did have one then.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Bitter.
For the contract administration, if you're only doing one site visit a month, what other tools do you have to manage that process?
Yeah, so I'd like to, I guess, point that out again, I don't think it'll be one per month. I think it, I think your construction timeline's going to be shorter than 12 months. We have the, we have, it's going to come out to basically probably one every two to three weeks, based on what your timeline is. Additionally, so on our side from the construction administration, there's a general process. We don't, we don't actually have any proprietary software that we pay to, to run. We manage everything on basically technology basis at this point. Relationships through email, phone calls. I will say this, I am very, very, very adamant about response time in our firm. Nothing goes beyond 24 hours. I, I, customer service is number one, that's how we get our next project. Word of mouth is incredibly important. So when it, when it relates to construction, when the guys call, and they're going to call at seven, eight in the morning, we're going to get back to them by nine 30, 10 o'clock, so that they're not sitting there all day and not able to do their job. That's, that's a huge thing we see in our industry. So it's more about communication and, and making sure you respond promptly to issues that come up than it is about managing tools and software. So that's at least our feelings on it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bartlett and your team? Okay, so now we'll have a presentation from Galbraith Carnahan Architects.
Thanks for having us here. My name is Joe Galbraith with Galbraith Carnahan Architects. I'm the founding partner of the firm. Also with me is Brandon Renke, who's a project manager that's been with us for 10 years, and Tim Brown, who's with Ericsson Engineering, they're the civil engineer for the project. Our project team does involve multiple other consultants. Of note is Spire Engineering, they are our structural engineer. All of the projects that I'm going to show you were designed in collaboration with Spire. They have extensive experience in this type of building, in buildings with interesting structures, roof deck type of structures. So that's why we selected them for our team. We have a licensed landscape architect as part of our team, along with Ericsson. And then we have some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers that are all, I would say, small, small shops that we've worked with on some kitchen renovation projects, most recently at Blue Mound Country Club, which is in Wauwatosa. Our firm, we've, we've been in business for about 12 years, and park projects are probably, we, we feel a great honor and privilege to work on projects that are within parks. And, you know, sort of one of our, one of our taglines is "nature is the best architect", and we follow its path. And what we mean by that is nature creates, does it right every time, creates great places. People go, will travel thousands of miles, spend lots of money to go see a waterfall, to be a part of, to be a part of nature. And when we, we get the task of creating a building within a park, there's a lot of weight for that, because not only are we competing, we're, we're part of this natural setting. These buildings tend to be around for a long time. You know, we're very inspired by a lot of the national parks, the, you know, all the work by the Conservation Corps that was, that was done in the 30s. And that is what, that is what we look to for inspiration when we're designing projects. And this lead slide here is from very early on in our firm, when we took a trip to Zion National Park, and we came across this tree that was on the top of a ridge. And it looks like a lot of other trees, but what is it, what is it even clinging on to? It's, it's, it's roots are spreading out, it's clinging on to rock. And the tree knows how to be retrieved through its DNA, and it's adapting to its surroundings. And so our approach to architecture has to do with identifying the DNA of a place, of a project, and of the site, and, you know, making a building that fits, and it feels like it's always been there, just like that tree feels like it's always been there. We want our buildings and our projects to feel like they've always been there. And so in the process of this RFP, we, we read this RFP, and it was, it was very interesting, because we're always, we're always seeking out parks projects. It's a goal of ours, you know, once a quarter that we, we submit an RFP for a parks project. And this had some interesting components. It had the city trying to be proactive, creating a restaurant project, and then it was, it was teamed with seeking out a restaurateur. And at that time, the, Eric had shared that the restaurateur was selected, and we learned that it was the Garver Events Group. And I'm very familiar with their Garver Feedmill in Madison, and it's a very dynamic space, and they're, they're visionary type people, and they fit the mold, and the city with how you're being proactive here, kind of fits the mold of our typical client profile, which are, they're visionary types. We don't, we don't ever work with chains, franchises, that's not, that's not typically what we do. We typically work on one-off type of buildings in unique spaces that are special and that are meant to last for a lifetime, and they're timeless. And so I'm just going to run you through four examples of projects that we've done that I think serve as, as a, as a good example here for, for this project. So next slide, please. So this, this project is in Dubuque, Iowa. This was a very interesting adaptive reuse project of a historic greenhouse into an urban farm. It's a group called Convivium Urban Farm, and within this building, they have greenhouses, an event space, and a cafe. And all that was existing on this site were a bunch of greenhouse dilapidated steel structures and this sort of rundown little slot building. And if you can, you can just sort of slip through these. The place, yeah, this is the floor plan, to give you an idea that it's not, it goes almost an entire, you know, half of a block here back to the, to the street on the other side. So it was, it was fairly extensive, you can imagine a, a large greenhouse type structure. And we, we took this building and created places, created a space that fits in with the neighborhood, and that has become extremely popular. You know, we, we modified some of the greenhouse structure to be able to bring in a patio, and then, you know, used, used materials to convey, you know, how these spaces should feel. And, you know, through this process, I did reach out to the restaurateurs, Dan and Tia, who I think are back here. And we, you know, we just had a brief conversation about what's important to them, and they used the word rustic. And I think our projects embody the, the term rustic. And, you know, what that means to me is that there's natural quality to these things, and there's a little bit of roughness. They're not, they're not polished, they're not, you know, it's not a, it's not a really, you know, finely finished type of thing, but it feels right. It feels, you know, you walk into that space and it feels, feels good. So this is just, you know, a little, little fireplace area that's part of that, and then this indoor space, this event space connects to that, to that outdoor patio. You know, we worked with a steel fabricator to create replicas of the greenhouse trusses, and then added a, added a number of skylights to the roof to bring in natural light. And this has become a very popular place in Dubuque, Iowa. There's a commercial kitchen inside of that, where they do a lot of teaching and food prep with the neighborhood about teaching people about how to work with natural foods. This is a parks project in Sauk County. So this is out, this is White Mound County Park. This was a project that we were awarded and worked through, worked through with a group called Free D Construction, who is out, does a lot of work in Bearaboo and Madison area. And this is a, it's a parks pavilion, but it also houses the Sauk County Parks Offices. So there's, there's a component of office, and then it becomes a, an event gathering type space. And it's become a very popular wedding destination. It gets a lot of, a lot of use, active use in the summer. And one of the best compliments that we've received about the project is it was completed, I believe in 2018, is that people have remarked to the Parks Director that the building feels like it was always there, that it's nestled into this great, you know, this great place on this damned lake that, that anchors the park. And what you can see here, the interesting siding is a, is a called a Corten Steel, so it's a product that rusts over time and then maintains that patina, so it's a very durable, long-lasting type material. But the color palette, I mean, it really, it really kind of echoes some of the natural areas that are directly adjacent. And they actually do controlled burns on that, that hillside, so having the metal siding was a sort of important to the, to the parks folks. This is a, a new coffee shop that just opened last year in Wauwatosa. So this was a complete ground-up building for a group called Fiddleheads Coffee, and they've, they have a few coffee shops in the Milwaukee area, and they pride themselves on creating unique destinations. This project was quite relevant because it, it seemed to capture some of the same qualities that we're looking for here, where it has outdoor patios, a roof deck, and then just a vibrant interior that they, they commissioned with a local artist to do some mural work on the interiors. And again, just bringing in natural materials. This is our office, which is called the Underwood Log Home. So this was a very interesting and complicated project where we relocated a two-story log home, moved it a mile across the city of Wauwatosa. And then, here's a picture of the move. So rainy night in March of 2018, the building was moved down North Avenue, so if you're familiar with Wauwatosa, Milwaukee, it's a fairly busy street, and then moved onto our site. And we did a complete design and build, we were the general contractors for this project, and completely retrofitted it for our offices. And again, you know, that, the term rustic, you know, I think is really captured in, in how this space feels as a place for creativity, where architects are coming to work with clients and, and create, create great buildings. Yeah, there's more space, and then we always like to introduce natural light, skylights, that's kind of a, you've seen that in a few, few different projects. Here, obviously, you're familiar, this is the, this is Sandy Beach, and I went out there, it wasn't the most beautiful day, so the photos aren't the most beautiful, but, you know, there's, there's, there's always beauty in place. There's always, there's always things, you know, looking at the sand and the colors and the variation, some of the trees, just things in the distance, you know. I think our firm really, we take our time with the design process. I, I think, you know, we had a little more- I, I think, you know, we had a little more time probably built into the design component. But just working with the city, working with the restaurateurs, and really trying to build a collaborative process, and coming up with a building that will be here, you know, the intention, is a long-term intention. These aren't, these aren't quick, quick-flip, you know, chain restaurants that are coming in for five-year stints and, you know, may leave a community. These are, these are long-term, these parks projects have to be, have to really resonate, and they have to be, they have to be timeless. And I think that's what our body of work shows, and we're very excited to, to work with the, the city and the restaurateurs, and to have that dialogue to really define what's important here, and to do so in a way that merges our expertise with the project budget and, and moves through the process. We've done it a number of times successfully with visionary-type clients, with municipal clients. And so, I feel like we have the, the right, the right team together here for a successful project. So, with that, I will turn it over to you for any questions you might have, and see if my team has anything to add.
Any questions for Mr. Galbraith or his team? Mr. Waters.
Thanks for coming tonight. When I look at the quote that you'd supplied, it's about 33% higher than the other quote.
Sure.
Is, is there elements in your quote that maybe are over and above the RFP process to help me understand this a little bit better?
Yeah, it's, RFPs are a little, little tricky, and I think this having sort of a, the white box, but restaurateur identified, you know, I, I'd sort of envisioned us being a bit more collaborative, have, you know, some challenging details with, with roof duck type structures, interesting structure. I think that's always an opportunity. Obviously, we're in a space with a, with an interesting structure that a structural engineer had to give some thought to versus just some simple gang nail trusses or a drop ceiling. So, I think in being pretty thoughtful on the design process, I think with that comes some, maybe some, you know, added engineering or technical costs that go into the design and planning. So, that's, that would be my only, I, I haven't seen any breakdowns from the other, the other firm to really, it's hard to make a comparison and contrast based on, I don't really have all the information on.
All right, thank you.
What might be the difference there? Yep.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bishop.
In the interest of fairness, I'll ask you a question, too. What frequency of site visits do you anticipate in a project like this?
We, let's see, I think we figured about, you know, a nine-to-12-month construction period, and we would have ourselves out there at around 12 times, 12 to 14 times. And that would be probably once a month early on, then two to three times during the thick of it, let's say when framing might be going on, and then it can taper. So, it isn't necessarily a strict cadence, but it, construction does sort of ebb and flow. And so, we would be there when, when we need to, but I, I would say, assume one to two times monthly. Yeah, and I think we put it in our proposal, you know, when we, when we write the bid documents, we usually require the contractor to use a software, let's say like Procore, which allows for them to post pictures of the project daily or weekly, or whatever we would require of them. And that would keep our team in tune with the, you know, the daily happenings of that as well, so.
Any other questions for the Galbraith-Carnahan team? Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we do have a prepared motion that Mr. Daley has provided for our consideration where we could choose one of the options. I think we have the flexibility to discuss before someone wants to make a motion, so I guess I would propose that we do that so that people can flush out any comments or feedback that we want to share with one another unless someone feels like moved to make a Any thoughts?
All right, I'll kick it off. I had a similar question in my mind to yours, Mr. Waters, just trying to understand the, the pricing differences. And obviously, there's finer points in how much each supporting consultant or, you know, subcontractor might be providing, but it was a little bit different, difficult to ascertain. And even after, you know, hearing from Mr. Galbraith today, it was a little bit difficult to ascertain what that, you know, how that additional cost was going to play out. And one thing I was thinking about is, while I value the collaboration idea, I, I also know that we're on a little bit of a timeline if we want to take this to August referendum, and so we want to make sure that, you know, whoever we select is going to be in a position to get us the cost that we need in time for that referendum process.
Mr. Fields, you look like you want to say something.
No, I, I, after listening to presentations and looking through all the material, I think both firms are very capable, so I don't think we have a bad decision which way, either way we go.
Mr. Waters.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Fields. As I look at the proposals and the presentations today, that, that they both seem to be very capable. The, the one bid is, is higher, so I was just trying to understand that, and I admit that I don't completely have my arms around that at this point, and, and I'm not sure exactly what it would take to get my arms around it, but, so I'm not, I'm not necessarily sure if I'm ready to make a motion necessarily tonight, but I guess I've been straddling a little bit here, so. Any other comments?
All right, I'll toss out another comment. Ms. Quednaw, I recall last meeting, you were leaning toward Thrive, and you gave some examples. And one of the things that I appreciated from Thrive this evening is that they listened to our last meeting and came with some additional information to be responsive to some of the concerns that we raised, or some of the questions that we raised. And one of the questions that I raised in particular was, you know, building from new as opposed to remodeling existing. And I appreciate how Thrive addressed that and gave a number of examples of, of new construction and, you know, designing from scratch. I also agree with Mr. Fields. I think both firms are competent, so I don't think we can go wrong here. And so, it's just kind of trying to decide, well, which one do we favor, and trying to move forward from there. And Mr. Daley, if, if there's ever anything you want to chime in from any additional staff perspective after what you've heard this evening, please feel free.
I would only add that it is, this is the city council's timeline, so how quickly the city council would like to move is, is within your prerogative. Obviously, Misty, can you remind me the, the amount of time we need to get the language to the county prior to the, prior to an election?
Just one second, I don't have it right in front of me.
I think it's right around 60 days, if, if, maybe give or take a few days. So, while she's looking, if we do delay, we certainly can. Sorry, Misty, go ahead. Then it may, we need, I think we just need to be flexible with the, with the timeline pressures that we would put on whoever we select, and that the, if we take more time to make a decision, then it may push us to a November election instead of an August election, which there's nothing inherently, inherently wrong with. It'll just stretch our timeline a little bit. So, just making sure we're aware that if we do extend that timeline, we, we have to be fair to the selected firm on what our expectations of them are.
So, just looking at my calendar, I believe, the first Tuesday in August, would that be the election? I don't know if it's the first Tuesday or not, but that would be August 6th.
Right, the August presidential primary would be the, the August election. I, I don't recall the exact date of what it is. I believe it's the first Tuesday, but I think usually it's the first Tuesday of the first full week.
Well, and I guess to be conservative, if we assume the beginning of August, that means we basically need, you know, a rough design and, and cost by the end of May, it sounds like.
Yeah, conceptual ideas with an estimate of probable cost for the project, I think, would be the most important piece of it, so that we can, we could show the public, here is a general idea of what we're, we're, we're looking to construct here, and here's a, you know, a general cost estimate. And then we can run some calculations on what the impact that would have on a typical single-family home, for example, you know, what it would do to the debt levy and how it would, how it would impact that, so. And then we have to give time for, most likely Attorney Drescher and myself to draft some proposed referendum language for the council to consider.
Okay.
Drake, I just wanted to confirm, I believe it's 70 days, not 60.
Okay.
I'm still looking, but I think it's 70.
Misty, I think it is. I found it on the Wisconsin Election Commission page.
Thank you, Mrs. Bishop. Ms. Quednaw.
I apologize, I don't have much of a voice, so I'll make this short and sweet, as is possible. Both firms did a really good job of meeting the expectations of what we were looking for. Both presentations were thorough and quite informative on many, many ways. I believe that both, like Mr. Waters and Steve said, that there was going to be, it would be a tough decision. And that being said, I don't, I want this to be clear, it is, it, it's really, it is a hard decision to make. But I would be willing to make a motion to set the, set it going, because given the, given the timeline and what we need to do, I think it is, as much as we'd like to sit on our heels, to, we have to make a decision, rip off the Band-Aid and go. So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve motion 24-2-1-1, selecting a firm for the Design, Bidding, and Construction Administration of the Sandy Beach Restaurant Facility with the option one, Thrive Architects, as noted in the city council motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quednaw and a second by Mr. Fields. Is there any discussion? Mr. Waters.
Looking at the proposals, there is the, the price difference. I, I really do like the design concepts that are coming from the Galbraith team. They seem to be very innovative and, and fit with the, the culture of our community and of the project that, that we're looking for down at Sandy Beach. So, I am leaning in that direction at this point.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote on, let's look up the number here. We have motion 24-2-1-1, selecting a firm for the Sandy Beach Restaurant Facility, choosing option one, Thrive Architects.
Mrs. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Quednaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
As you can see, it was a difficult decision, and I commend both firms. I really appreciate your time this evening and the quality of your work and everything that you've presented to us this evening, so thank you for being here. Drake, is there anything further that you need on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is ordinance 1262. Misty, let's see, this is the second reading, so Misty, I'd like to have you go ahead and do that reading for us.
Ordinance 1262, amendment in City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 24607131414002. Owner, Barry G. Luce Trust and Thomas A. Boyce Trust, 265 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So, that's our second reading for that ordinance amendment. So, generally, we would have the third reading at our next meeting. We did have some correspondence from Mr. Luce, as well as from some constituents regarding this project. Does anyone have any questions or anything you want to discuss about this amendment, ordinance proposal tonight? So, then we'll move on to the, we'll, we'll have this scheduled for our third reading at the next meeting, and then that, that would be when we would take a vote on it. So, the next item is resolution 24-6, which is the development agreement for the Cottage Hotel Apartments. This is related to the ordinance above. So, it's my understanding we can proceed to move ahead with this tonight, or we can continue it over to the next meeting to follow after the zoning amendment. Is that correct?
Correct. Both approvals are necessary for the project to move forward. The ordinance simply requires the three readings, whereas a development agreement does not. But both are required for approval for the applicant to be able to move forward with obtaining permits for the project.
Okay, is there anything that anyone would like to discuss about resolution 24-6 tonight? Mr. Fields?
Yeah, I've got just a couple of questions. Maybe Dan, you could help out with some of this. Going through some of the history on this, or reading back on this, they gave us kind of a timeline or a history of how this project came together. Would you potentially be able to put together a little history of, from the city's end of some of the inspection reports or some of the correspondence on this property over the years also, so that we've kind of got the whole works for the council's consideration?
I can, I, a little bit. I can go forward from basically 2019. There was a raise order that was issued regarding the, the property in 2019. There was an order to vacate the property of inhabitants at that time as well. And then, since that point, we've engaged with the owner of the property to look for a solution. He's desirous of redeveloping the property, so we've been proceeding through really our, our ordinance and how to get to a yes on the proposed redevelopment of the property. I guess that's kind of the extent of, of general, kind of high-level review. Do you have, like, specific questions, or do you want a specific issue addressed?
No, I just wanted to kind of, I, when I went through all the documents, I saw kind of from the architectural end, they kind of gave a little history of the, of the project and how they got to it, but we really haven't.
There's.
The city side, I wanted to see the, also the information, how we got to where we are.
There's a planner's memo in Plan Commission Agenda from October of '22, I believe, when this process started.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Yeah.
Excuse me, '21. When this process, when the, when COVID got in the way of the, the raising of the property, and nothing happened for a span of time. So, when the, the owner, developer was, was moving forward with a redevelopment plan, it first went in front of the Plan Commission for a rezone. That's where there, there was a discussion about the northern property, the property adjacent immediately north, on the west half of that property basically being used to serve and accommodate the redevelopment of the property basically being used to serve and accommodate the redevelopment of the Bayberry Inn. At that Plan Commission meeting, the, it was, it was amorphous. It kind of changed as we went. But there is basically a comprehensive memo from that time. The rezone that's in front of you in the previous item is a rezone from R16 to R312 with a PDD overlay. The PDD overlay requires the development agreement. That is basically in exchange, a bargain-for-exchange between the developer and the city, a relaxation of certain bulk regulations or certain rules that are implemented, and in exchange for a higher level of design, for better site accommodations, for a benefit to the city. So it's taken some time to basically go through that process and get to a point where plans are established, where utility and infrastructure has been appropriately addressed, and there's, there's plans that ultimately have at least one level of state approval at this point. Again, I understand that they're going back for an additional amendment. From that point, we, we've been in front of the council on this issue a few times now in, in considering the rezone and the development plan. You saw the general development plan and precise implementation plan previously. Those are incorporated in the development agreement as well. I, I think that the owner would probably be able to give a better idea of like the history of the property itself. We have run into questions about the historical significance of the property, and that's basically kind of combating in a way the state of disrepair or the deferred maintenance that the property is currently under, being that it is under a raise order. So there's kind of competing and conflicting interests there. And I, I think that the owner, the developer is motivated to preserve and maintain the property and has developed a, a solution that he sees as fit for the property, that it's a decent fit for the neighborhood, being a nine-unit residential facility. It, it does benefit the city by allowing access and an easement through the, the drive that is there for emergency services. There is little infrastructural impact to the city. There will be an extension of a water main. There will be some established stormwater that has a kind of a regional component that mostly serves this relatively large property, for a Main Street property anyway. Other than that, I think we're, we're kind of, it, it's gotten a long time, it's taken a long time to get to this point, and we're really at where the rubber meets the road. It, it's up to the council to decide whether or not the zoning change and the PDD overlay and the plan are satisfactory to you, and whether or not this is a zoning change that you want to grant in expectation that this project is completed. I, I think those are kind of some of the interests and some of the weighing that you as a board, as a council, will have to do. And I, I know that the developer, the owner, is here tonight, and I'm certain that he'd like to speak to you on, on issues or perhaps the history of the property, his motivations in the property. And then with regard to the city, I'm certainly happy to talk to you about the process and where we're at in that, what has led to this point. I think what I've kind of provided tonight is a, is a brief and adequate synopsis. But if you do have specific questions, I'd be happy to address those to my ability.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I would just also echo your comment. Mr. Luce is here in the audience tonight. If anyone has any questions for him tonight, or Barry, if you would like to say anything tonight, you are certainly welcome to, or if you'd like to listen to our discussion and come next time with some comments.
Thank you, Your Budget.
Oh, okay.
I move to suspend the rules.
Do you like to say something tonight?
No.
No? Okay, all right.
I, I move to suspend the rules if, if he was willing to, but it looks like.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come and speak, Mr. Luce?
Don't believe you have a question.
Oh, okay.
Because he would, we would need to suspend the rules if we were going to do that.
Right, right. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Luce?
No, thanks, please.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
Mr. Drescher?
Yep.
Related to the scope, the scope of authority, I guess, of council pertaining to the development agreement, does the council have the authority to, to make recommendations or to alter the agreement in any way?
Um, I mean, it depends. With regard to the zoning change and the PDD overlay, you do have ability to, it goes back to that bargain-for-exchange. You do have the ability to impose criteria on the redevelopment. It, it's, it's interesting because there are plans in front of you. I, I do, based on the contract that is proposed, you have authority to either agree to that contract or not agree to that contract. If there are changes in the site plan that you would like to be completed, to endeavor to agree to it, then it would be appropriate to make those suggestions.
Okay.
If you're going to get into the verbiage of the development agreement, I mean, we may have long discussions on why certain terms are appropriate or not. So I'd be a little bit more leery there, but.
You answered my question. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Quinault?
I see that we have the building inspector here, or our zoning ins, sorry. Zach, can you come up? Because I have a question for you. Oh, Troy, you know what? I'm sorry. I'm just not with it today. Fortunately, I can ask this question. You've had the opportunity to take a look at this building, correct?
Correct.
What, what I'm concerned about is that there is a lot of talk about, you know, redoing the building because of, of the historical value of it. Are the bones of the building worth doing all of those things? Is it going to handle being able to be fixed?
Sure. So I'm definitely not a structural engineer, but I'm going to go off of the architect that was in there, I've worked with closely for the last 10, 12 years. He's, he was in there, excuse me, they did do some demo-ing of the walls to look, like you said, at the bones. There's definitely some areas that need to be touched up, some foundation issues. There's some, you know, windows bent out. There's going to be some rot interior, exterior that needs to be addressed. But I do believe the bones are salvageable. But I don't think we have a lot of time if, if they're, either it needs to be buttoned up and, and, and preserved the way it is and not get any worse, or, you know, it needs to be raised, as, as Dan said, you know, five years ago, four years ago, that it was, it was deemed to be raised then. It hasn't gotten any better, obviously. So do I think it's salvageable? Yes. Is it going to be expensive? Yep. But is it doable? I think so.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for staff, or maybe one as a comment. But on the development agreement, I know staff has been working extensively with Mr. Luce for a while, and I'm wondering if the timelines maybe need to be adjusted slightly in the development agreement to make it feasible for Mr. Luce to complete this project. It looks like it contemplates him applying for permits on March 1st, but if we don't, assuming the council approves it, we would be approving it on February 20th. That doesn't, you know, give a lot of time, and then there's only a little more than a year. So I'm just wondering if that's something we should look at, just tweaking those timelines a little bit to make sure that it's a feasible timeline.
A feasible timeline is what, what's intended. Obviously, we're, we're set back and permits have not been pulled, but there are, you know, at least an iteration of state-approved plans. So there, there has been work done on that front. A timeline is inserted into a document like this with the goal of completing the project in a reasonable time and a reasonable manner. And I would think that an adjustment there may, or may not be appropriate. I mean, let's, let's hear from the developer on that and what, you know, faith you have in the, the proposed completion and the proposed completion date. That's, that's on, on your guys' plate. An 18-month redevelopment timeline on a project like this, based on what I know and understand, is, is reasonable.
Yeah, so we can, we can work backwards from that, from the original time that we developed the timeline. We can make those adjustments, or the, or the council can at time of approval. If the council would like to see that timeline adjusted before the next meeting, we can certainly endeavor to do so. But we are, we are of the opinion that that 18th month, the 18th month timeline globally is a reasonable request of the developer to adhere to.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was that we received some correspondence regarding statutory requirement related to raising, and it, I don't have it in front of me, but it, it talks about that 85% of the assessed value is deemed to be reasonable. And we got a, a question about whether that, you know, would limit the cost of the project. And I just wondered if we could get some interpretation on that for the record so that everybody's clear.
There's a few, a few issues there. I, I also have received that correspondence. Was familiar with the, the statute prior. The, you're talking about reasonability of, of cost for reconstruction, and you're weighing that against a dilapidated structure that is beyond repair. Okay? In a historic structure, that's the, the section of the statute that was sent. It specifically applies to historic structures, and they basically insert that 85 percentile as per se reasonable. It is reasonable to invest that amount in a reconstruction process. That doesn't compel you to either say yes or no based on that number. I don't think you could say no if it's less than 85% under the right circumstances. But it doesn't compel you to say, oh, it's, it's 85% or it's 110%. The answer is no. You know, it's, it's, it's not really that way. I, I'll pull up the, the order, the statute, and we can examine it more closely if you want.
Well, and I guess what I wanted to understand is, I was reading it, it doesn't, it seems like it's largely up to the property owner, how much they're willing to spend. It didn't appear that the statute placed a limit on how much some, someone could spend. And that's what I was trying to understand, if that, you know, if there's something that the city is prohibited from approving something based on how much it would cost. I just wanted to make sure we understand that.
Right. The, the city is not compelled to deny a renovation project because it exceeds the, you know, the per se reasonable amount. You're not, you're not compelled to, to do so and then proceed with, with a raise. There's, there's tools available to you if you're going through that process, but you're, you're not compelled to because of, of the statute.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion this evening, or questions for Mr. Luce? Thank you for being here, Mr. Luce. And I think it would be really helpful if you could be here next time and maybe even share some information with us.
I'm, 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 I'm making.
That's fine.
I'm, we had a medical emergency up north.
Okay. Well, this will be on next, our next meeting in two weeks.
I'm, 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 I'm building.
Okay. If you, if, do you want to speak tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
A second.
Okay, can, all in favor of suspending the rules to allow Mr. Luce to speak? That's 5-0. Okay, what would you like to share tonight?
I, I just wanted to, the reason I'm doing this is I want to save this old historic building. I love these old buildings. I've, I've been here for 40 years. I've renovated 17 buildings in town, and I'm just thinking, an old cottage hotel, if it was done right, which it will be, it'll be a major asset to the neighborhood and to the town. And with the need for apartments, I'm a realtor, every week we have someone come and look for an apartment to, to rent. I think it, it would be a great asset to have a apartment you can walk right downtown, you know, within walking distance. So that's the reason I'm, I'm so, you know, interested in succeeding this project. I hear these architects talk about readaptive use. This is the same thing. This is an old 32-room hotel that was built in the early 1900s. And all I'm trying to do is use the first three floors and make it so that it is a viable building in town. Anybody got any questions for me?
I do.
Ms. Quinault?
Mr. Lucci, how, Luce?
Bruce, everybody call me Bruce.
Barry, how long have you owned that building?
I've owned the building since 1988 or '89. We bought it, we first did the Fargo Mansion Inn, and then we came over. We had so much business, we, it was a boarding house back there. We changed it into a bed and breakfast then. And it was a, it wasn't the same clientele. It was more like off-the-road hotel is what it was. And it did very well for like 10 years. And then when the hotel came in, the business declined. And then we went back to boarding house. And that's where some of the issues started. But I mean, I've owned it for quite a few years.
Okay. What kinds of, what's prevented you from doing this work before now?
Tell me that again?
What has prevented you from doing this work before now?
Because I was working on so many other problems, other buildings. And I, it's a major, major undertaking. I mean, it's not, it's not a small, little storefront to renovate. And so it was, wasn't until I thought, I need to do it now or I don't. And that's why I'm doing it now. I made a commitment to make this a, a great place for the town.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Luce? Okay, well, we'll continue this item then, resolution 24-6 to our next meeting, and then we'll be able to consider the zoning amendment and the resolution next time.
Is that it?
That is it for tonight. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay, our next item is letter F, which is a discussion on possible decision on the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project. Drake?
Yep. So this may be a little bit of a, a different conversation than we may have been anticipating. But late last week, a representative for the City of Jefferson, one of, from their engineering team, reached out to Director Myram, indicating that they are anticipating undertaking a new wastewater treatment plant project and are looking at options for regionalization and are interested in starting those conversations. The letter is included that we received on Monday from the City of Jefferson. So tonight, I am, I am asking the City Council for some time to explore that, see if it is of benefit to the, to the city, if there are economies of scale that we can manage that will benefit us into the future. So I am, I am asking for some time to explore this as an option. When we originally started, my understanding is, is that we, the city, reached out to other communities at that time, and no one expressed interest at that time. But now there does appear to be a change, and I, I believe we do have the time to explore this, explore this option and see if there is a benefit to us. So the, I went back, I reviewed the original motion that was approved, and it, it was, it was, it did, it states a new site at a new location. It was broad. I believe this would still fall within that. So I don't, I don't know that the council has to rescind any action to provide me with the time to do so. You certainly are, you have that ability to do so. But I, that's my request of the council is to be given some time to speak with the City of Jefferson and see where this leads as a viable option.
Mr. Fields?
I definitely don't have a problem with talking to the City of Jefferson. I guess my concern, or if you could keep us in the loop, is how does this fall with our DNR parameters as far as our timeframe to start moving forward on stuff? I know we do have some issues with our permitting, that we have to continue moving forward or show forward movement. So I guess keep us in the loop or let us know what that timeline is. We got to make decisions here in the near future.
Any other comments? I had a couple, I had, I took the opportunity to go back and listen to our meeting where we adopted a motion to go in the direction of a new plant, and that was almost two years ago, February 15th, 2022. And it was a lengthy discussion, and it really refreshed my memory on a lot of things that we talked about. Our number one thing was the cost. And so I know last meeting, we started to get into, you know, new information about the cost. And one of the things that struck me from our meeting from a couple of years ago is that we were all also asking, if there's new information available, you know, does, can we change our decision? And the answer was yes at that time for Mr. Wilkie. So I hope that we will continue to make sure that, you know, we're getting all the latest information, whether it's on regionalization or costs or technology or, you know, or whatever it might be. it might be, so that, you know, we can move forward with, with the best approach. I note that that was a motion rather than a resolution, so I don't know if that changes, you know, how we would, if there's some procedural requirements there, but it, to me, it certainly seems worth looking into the regionalization before we would, you know, spend any more time on or money developing a facility plan for whatever option we want to go with. Ms. Curley?
Yeah, Ms. Quinno.
I, I agree with you that we, this is a great idea and I'm glad that it's been brought to our attention, given the last meeting where we were all a bit confused about some things. I think this is a good segue to find out what's coming.
Mr. Waters.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager the ability to work with the City of Jefferson to review our wastewater treatment options.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop. Any further discussion? I guess I'll just add, I don't know if I can maybe add this after we would vote, but one thought I would have kind of reflecting on Mr. Fields' comments is, you know, we have a strategic plan that we adopted about a year and a half ago and those are our top priorities and we're gradually making progress on a lot of those. But I think that this is one that the times that the council worked on it, there was a big gap. And we, you know, the, the public works board was working on it, staff was working on it, but there was a big gap for the council that led, you know, to, you know, us, us not being up to date on what was happening and not refreshing our recollection. So I, I, I think it might be nice if we could do some kind of a quarterly discussion agenda item to just be getting updates on all of our strategic items. So that, you know, gives Drake the opportunity to just keep us posted on where things are, gives us the opportunity to give feedback. And I mean, that's a dynamic document too. We can certainly change our goals, but hopefully something like that. And I, I wonder what my fellow council members think, but something like, some kind of a quarterly check-in on all of our strategic goals seems like it might be a good, good exercise.
I think as president of council, you can request that from the city manager.
All right. Well, let's, let's plan on doing that and I'll, I'll talk with Drake about, you know, sort of the timing of that and how, how that would work. But I think that will just help us make sure that we're all thinking about what are the top priorities. And then when other things come, you know, before us that, that we want to work on, our constituents want to work on, we're remembering that, well, we also have to work on these priorities. So, okay. So that was a little bit of a segue. Any further discussion on the motion on the table to direct the city manager to work with Jefferson on possible regionalization? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote on the motion then? Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Does that give you what you need, Drake?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So next item is Letter G, discussion and possible decision on potential American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds expenditures. We have a memo. So, Mr. Daley?
Mm-hmm. So there's a memo included in your packet. It lists potential uses of the ARPA funds. I have asked several staff members to be here if there's any questions on any specific uses of it, but there is approximately two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars remaining. That's up a little bit from the last time we reviewed it, as we are, we are gaining interest on it as it, as we don't use it. So it's, I believe about eight thousand dollars more than the last time we discussed ARPA during the budget process. So, and the projects add up to the, to using the remainder of that amount. These are all needs that would benefit the, the various city departments and, and its operations. But of course, the, the use of the American Rescue Plan funds are fully up to this, this body for decision. So if there's any questions on any of the items that are listed here, we are happy to answer questions. And I guess I would add that the funds must be encumbered before the end of twenty twenty-four and then spent by the end of twenty twenty-five. So we, we have to say what we're going to spend the dollars on this year.
Just a, a follow-up question. So what exactly does encumbered mean? Like what action? Is it just like a vote of the council that this, what we want to use them for? Does it have to be included in a budget? What, what's the actual action to encumber?
I believe approval of the, of the expenditures for a purpose would fulfill that requirement, that reporting requirement.
Okay.
I, I have an additional question to that.
Ms. Quinno?
Maybe I, maybe I misheard. Do you want us to identify which ones we, we want?
The council will have to, yes.
Okay. So you want that today or do you want that another time?
It doesn't have to be today. This is just the, the council had asked for ideas on what to utilize these funds for. These are what myself and the staff have, have come up with. You don't have to take action today, no. But these are our suggestions.
Does anyone have any questions on the items that are listed or other discussion on potential use of funds? Mr. Waters?
I thank you for putting this list together, all the, all the staff of the city, actually. Couple of questions. One is a, a large expenditure on this list, a hundred and fifty thousand for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Just wondering if that, that happens to be an item that we've talked about a lot this month, wastewater treatment plant and the, the expenditure of, of building a new one possibly down the road. How would this hundred and fifty thousand relate to that or does it relate to that? It, it seems like a large amount and I'd hate to spend it and then boom, we decide to build a new facility and that hundred and fifty kind of goes to waste maybe? I'm not sure.
Yeah. So Director Myram can speak a little bit more in detail to it, but this is for, specifically for the SCADA system. So this is a, a, I'll call it a program that allows us to access certain components of the entire wastewater treatment facility, utility network remotely, alerts you to issues with the system. Ours is woefully out of date in Director Myram's assessment. So it would not go to waste if we did build a new plant. This is a, this is a, it can be integrated with moved, integrated and useful regardless of if we stayed at the existing site, built a new plant, had a regional approach, it would integrate in, into, into whatever system that we have. So I'll let Randy speak in more detail about what this entails.
The SCADA system is a computerized warning and operational system that we have come to rely on for wastewater and water and to some degree for electric. We rely on this essentially to help us keep track of the many lift stations we have in our collection system. You cannot do this manually because there are so many, but it's quite frequent that mechanical systems will break down in our collection system. SCADA gives us the alert and the more advanced SCADA systems gives us the ability to fix this remotely. It also gives us the ability for plant operations if ever we need to remote in from outside of the plant. Say if I am out of town, it would give me the ability to make a fix from my laptop. This can be very critical if we have a pump that is overheating, SCADA alerts us, whoever is on call. This concept of sharing a plant with Jefferson is obviously just that right now, it's a concept, but we are already discussing just sharing maybe one portion of the plant, either the solids or the liquid side. This would be something that we would sync, they would obviously use SCADA too. They'd be installing the most modern system and we would be able to, instead of losing what we invested in, we'd be able to sync with this new plant. So I see no loss at all, but actually more of an upgrade.
I have a follow-up question to that. Well, one, two, I guess, one, it, it sounds like it's more of a software kind of a program and so therefore it could be, as Drake said, kind of, it could be utilized at a new plant or a different location or whatever, so it would not be a sunk cost that we would lose. It would be an investment we would retain. Okay. So that was a comment, I guess, rather than a question. So my question is, for this cost, would this normally be charged to rate payers? If we were to purchase this as part of a capital improvement budget, would that normally go to utility, you know, wastewater utility rate payers as opposed to?
I guess in the aggregate, yes.
City taxpayers?
Yeah, that's correct.
It would be unfolded into rates, yes.
Okay. And I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we can't use ARPA funds for it or might not choose to, but it, it seems like that would, if we didn't use ARPA funds, that would be the mechanism that we would use to pay for something like this.
Yes. It's such a large upfront cost that I saw the opportunity here, that's why I proposed it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
So right along those lines, what are the ongoing costs after we get this system set up year after year?
They range. There are yearly maintenance costs. Management costs are minimal though. I can't give you a dollar figure right now, but we probably pay for consulting fees for maintenance of it, six thousand, seven thousand a year.
And that's true today also? I mean, that's part of our normal operation budget?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this list? Mr. Waters?
Still taking quick notes here. Also, the, the library is listed twice here for about thirty-five thousand dollars of expenditures. And I know that the library is, is going through a review process and, and looking at a possible renovation or addition, addition to the library that, that'll be, be coming to is probably in the next year, I would imagine. So same type of question, do these thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure conflict with that at all?
I would just offer one clarification.
Yeah.
The fifth, the first, the conversion of city hall library to conference room is not, it's located at city hall.
Thank you.
We have a room in our employee, in our employee area that is called the library. It's a, it's a room that houses old publications, old, some old documents, and, you know, certain things that have collected over the years that, that the room is not heavily utilized and doesn't provide much benefit. This city staff does not have a city staff only conference room, so that's, that would be the goal of that, of that project, to convert that room into a more useful space. The windows has been identified by our, our, kind of our, our building maintenance technician, Travis, as well as Director Schreiner. That is a cost that could be rolled into a future improvement project at the library, but it would not, if the, if the, the windows were replaced, the, the windows aren't going away. It, it's an addition to, with some renovations on the, on the interior, so the windows would remain used, used and useful if a project were, a library improvement project were to undertake. You could roll that into a capital improvement project at the library, but we would, we would continue to benefit from them if we replace them, replace them earlier.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask a couple since I'm seeing some of our other department heads here. So the bidirectional antenna, perhaps Chief Trader could speak to that. I know we invested in upgrades to this system in a previous budget and it sounds like there's still some areas where that communication isn't working. Can you just tell us more about that?
Sure. So, excuse me, through Jefferson County Communications, they did an upgrade to their entire communication system, moving to a digital platform from analog. And that's where our upgrade came with our new radios and some upgrades we did to existing radios. What we found since that project was completed is that we don't have adequate coverage within our police department building of the Jefferson County main law enforcement channel. So there are dead spots within our police department where officers' portable radios can't communicate with the county, so they're not hearing transmissions from the county or they're not able to get transmissions out. We worked with Gen, General Communications, who is a contractor for the county's project, to see if redirecting the antenna that's at the rest area off I ninety-four, which is our closest antenna, would help. They've done different testing and really because of the structure of this building and what it's made out of and where we sit, there's just dead spots and one of them is our officer workroom. So we consulted with General Communications to see what options were available to fix it. In this bidirectional antenna, they happen to have a used one on hand from a project that didn't get used. So they were offering it to us at half of the cost of what it would normally cost. It's still a large expense, but a necessary one so that our communications with Jefferson County aren't affected negatively in this building. It only provides boosted signal for the one Jefferson County law enforcement channel and that's what our officers use about seventy-five percent of the time.
And then just a follow-up, you said they're offering it at half price. Is that, is that a time-sensitive offer?
I believe it is. I did reach back out to them in January when we refreshed these recommendations for you. They do still have it on hand and are still offering it. I didn't ask how long they would keep it, I was just confirming that it was still an option. So I don't think they'll keep it forever, so it, it likely is time-sensitive.
Okay. Thank you. So Chief Russ, we might as well have you come and talk about the fire department garage door since you're here as well. And maybe I'll just comment, I, I do see some of these, well, there's obviously is an upfront cost, some of the things like this garage door or the library windows would have some, you know, energy savings seems like, so there's some kind of return on investment there. Go ahead, Chief Russ.
Yeah. So the garage door item that was identified, hard to believe that building isn't that old, that something would be outdated and non-upgradable, I guess, is really the issue. One of the things, the fire department does have a rather large utility bill and the efforts would be realistically to try to cut down on that ongoing larger utility bill. The idea behind it is, one of the biggest were that we lose a lot of the heat and the energy is by the garage doors opening, the vehicles going in and out. The garage door is not necessarily being closed in an appropriate timeframe. We have come in and found garage doors left open, which is unfortunate because it's just pumping, you know, the energies outside. The idea behind this would really be to upgrade the door openers so that way we could put some photo sensor eyes, some time framings on them, so that way after a certain timeframe, the doors would automatically close. The other part of it is that the, right now, the antennas for the garage doors opening themselves are on the inside of the building and really what needs to happen is when the trucks go in and out, is to have that antenna on the outside of the building. This would then also allow for the upgrade to have the antennas on the outside. The other safety factor that would come into this would be the photo sensing eyes currently right now, the vehicles, some have very large bumpers, some don't have large bumpers, ladder truck, so as the vehicle passes through, depending on how the eyes are set, it may not catch a certain part of the vehicle, which then the door might be already coming down. What'll happen here is we're looking to upgrade to curtain sensors, so it basically gives you like a thirty-six to a sixty inch along the door versus just the single photo sensors that you see at your, your home. So it would catch to reduce the risk of somebody, you know, hitting the doors or coming back in, which currently we're waiting on two panels to come in for that, so.
I was trying to picture as I read this, what the situation would be like. So is it, you know, a, a set of firefighters respond, is responding to a call, hops on the truck, leaves and the door just stays open indefinitely until someone returns from the fire?
Well, I wouldn't say indefinitely. Normally it's somebody else's coming in for the call that notices that the door might be open. Currently what it is, is the door openers are a very large box and the idea behind when they did that system, it was that they could use any box to open any door, they would just have to tune it to the frequency. They're not very, uh, they're not the best. They're not very, they're not the best at receiving the signals and transmitting the signals, so as the trucks going out, if we have a large, an active structure fire, you know, they're focused on going, getting to the scene, looking up the stuff, you know, as far as directions, listening to the radio, what's going on. They think they hit the radio or they hit the button, well, next thing you know, they're already out of range because we don't have the antennas on the outside versus you have to be right tight up against the door with the vehicle before it'll open, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had a question for Chief, if I may. Previously, Ryan Brothers in the report has mentioned an issue where they were trying to sync, I don't recall if it was internet or radio, with the station, it sounded like. Do you know if that's been resolved? And if not, could funds be used for that also?
Eric and Chief is, they're working on getting me the internet. I believe there's an upgrade that's already currently going around. So if that actually does solve the problem, then yes, that would be taken care of. So that's already, something that's already in play.
Yeah, we're installing new upgraded access points throughout city facilities to improve internet connectivity in them, so we're hopeful that resolves the issue. It remains to be seen, but we anticipate having much stronger internet signals than we currently enjoy. We are also working with Spectrum on other internet upgrades. Those are ongoing costs that we're grappling with rather than one-time costs, so we're trying to figure out what the best path forward there is yet on improving the actual service that's coming into our buildings is, the access points are improving how we distribute that service throughout them. But we are working with Spectrum to see if we can find a solution from what we're receiving into the buildings as well. If that would not have been already in progress, it would have probably been something we would have been looking at.
Thank you. Any other questions on items on this list? Mr. Fields?
Looking at the list here, I think all these are very important or good issues that were brought up. I guess, my opinion is, these are all items that we can budget for at any time, so if we see these as a priority, we should be plugging these into our budgets. Where I think the ladder truck was more of a surprise, and applying the art money towards the ladder truck basically keeps us on track for our long-term borrowing, which we had laid out in our strategic plan. So, I'm, right now, I guess I'm in favor of using this towards the ladder truck, so we stay on our borrowing schedule, and all these items, we should be able to budget accordingly if they're a priority.
Mr. Waters?
I agree with Mr. Fields. Actually, after we did the ladder truck, I got my property tax bill the following day, and it was up 17.8%. It was quite the shock. So the tax money is rolling through, of course. So I'd like to make a motion, be resolved that the City Council of Lake Mills has previously approved the purchase of a ladder truck for the fire department and request that the remaining ARPA funds for this city of approximately $271,000 is used to fund a portion of this purchase.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Just, I guess, maybe to check with the city attorney, is that within the agenda item to approve something that's different than what was listed in the memo?
Yeah.
Okay, because of the title of the agenda item, okay. Thank you. Any discussion, comments? Mrs. Bishop?
I have a question with Mr. Waters' motion. Would that require us, let me think through this, because that would be for borrowing for this year. Do we need to amend any other budget items in the future if this is approved tonight?
Well, you may have to amend the capital budget and the anticipated borrowing, right?
Right. Do we have to amend the budget?
I guess if you're spending less than you anticipated, doesn't matter, is really the question.
I would say that we will change the source of, the funds applied, so the revenue will change, which will ultimately reduce the amount that we need to borrow. Do you need, do you need to amend the budget in order to have a lower borrowing cost? I think you're still within budget, so probably not. So I would say that it does not require it. You're simply choosing to apply a, a different source of revenue, not unlike when we choose to apply general fund surplus rather than go to a local borrow, which we've done in years past.
Okay, thank you. And then, Ms. Curler, I have a follow-up from Mr. Waters, if I may.
Sure.
Did you have a dollar amount that you would want to ascribe to this motion?
It was $271,000.
The full amount, okay.
It was approximately, yeah.
Okay.
So I have a question for staff that is related to this. For the purchase of the ladder truck, it's my understanding that those costs would be borne by the entire fire district. Is that correct? So that is not limited to city properties or city residents, but it would extend to the entire fire protection district? Is that correct?
That's correct. It would reduce the, the capital outlay, the capital expenditure, and so that proportional, that share that goes out would be ultimately reduced as well.
So the reason I'm asking that is because I, as much as I, I like the idea of reducing our need to borrow money, but I'm concerned that allocating all this $271,000 to the ladder truck benefits people beyond our city taxpayers. So we're kind of giving away some of our ARPA funds to others in a way, and not that I don't, you know, we, obviously, we're all part of a larger community and, and we want to protect the entire district, but it's not, you know, all, our neighboring townships also received ARPA funds, and so they could use those for different things, and we have these ARPA funds, and I, my preference would be to use them for purposes that directly, you know, affect our city taxpayers rather than the broader fire protection district. Mrs. Bishop?
I want to respond directly to that. We may have had to buy the ladder truck anyway, regardless of whether it was being used for the surrounding municipalities, and the other people in our fire district outside of our city bounds are not borrowing for this like we are. So they're not going to be added to the revenue that we would have to generate from the tax levy for this.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I follow what you, what you mean, or if that is correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're borrowing the sole amount for this fire truck, nobody else, no other municipality, no other citizens outside of the citizens of the city of Lake Mills are going to pay us back for the ladder truck with the money that we're borrowing.
A portion of, so when we, when we send the bills to the townships for their portion of the fire department budget, it does include any, any debt service that, that is going on in that, in that department. So currently, for example, $100,000 of revenue that we receive, that we bill for, that we collect from the townships goes towards the principal and interest payment of the fire department building.
Okay, that helps me understand, thank you. Ms. Curler, may I have an additional statement in this topic?
Yes, but I just, I guess I want to make sure we're clarifying, so I think what you said was not strictly correct, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same thing.
And Mr. Daley, yeah, corrected me and helped me understand that they were in fact being billed in essence for a portion.
We're borrowing the full amount.
Right.
But a portion of their, of what we collect from them gets allocated to capital.
Right. And that's what I didn't understand with Ms. Curler's statement, so now I understand.
We're putting the full faith of the city behind that borrowing, so that's the risk that only we're taking on, but the costs aren't distributed.
No, I understand that better now, thank you. The other thing I wanted to say was, with using the whole amount of ARPA funds, with the idea now of wastewater treatment plant regionalization, Mr. Daley, do you foresee that there would be any upfront costs for us either for a consultant or analysis to help us determine if regionalization is the best way forward? Do you want to reserve funds for anything like that?
I do anticipate we'll want to consult with experts in that, in that realm. What amount that will be, I don't know. We do have funds within the wastewater treatment plant operating that we could, that we could pull from as well. So we certainly could reserve some. I don't have, I'm intending to go through this with keeping our costs as low as possible from the consultant side when we're in, especially when in the initial stage of this evaluation, but I do anticipate some costs, but I can't give you a dollar amount of what I anticipate that to be. If I may just add, I know the conversation is still ongoing, but if, when a vote on the motion comes up, I would like the council to clarify whether it's intent that the full amount of ARPA funds plus any additional interest that we may accumulate prior to purchasing, when we take ownership in November and actually pay the, pay the, pay the bill, whether we'd want to apply anything that we gain in the coming months. I just want to be, make sure that the council's allocating the amount that they, that they would like to. So it could just, it could be the $271,000 plus any interest that is gained in the, until the expenditure occurs.
I can make an amendment after we're done discussing here.
Are there any other comments on the original motion? Mr. Fields?
I guess I'd like to address the idea of using the ARPA fund for the benefit of other local communities and villages around us and townships. That's exactly what we did with spending the first half on an ambulance, that we're now providing that service to local townships and villages around us. That's exactly what we did with the first half of the money, so this should be no different. There might be a benefit to them, but at the same time, we're going to be able to recoup them costs to the fees that we charge them. And actually, we're not even charging fees for our ambulance at the moment. So we're not doing anything different than we've already done.
Ms. Curler? Ms. Quinnow?
This also meets our strategic plan goals of providing emergency services along those lines, so I feel like that's probably in our best interest.
Well, I mean, we've already decided to purchase the ladder truck, so certainly that, that's the, we have support in emergency services. Now we're talking about what- You're right. Where does the money go? Money we're going to use to cover it, which I have a different perspective on. Mr. Waters?
I just wanted to follow up on the accounting of this transaction. Ms. Bell, maybe you can help me out with this a little bit, but when we, when we pay down on something from the fire department or the police department or something like that, how would that impact what we bill to the surrounding communities? I mean, if we take it upon ourselves to pay down a bill, I don't see how that would reduce the, the costs that we, we charge the surrounding communities for that equipment that we're using.
The principal and interest payments would be less because we're borrowing less.
Okay.
So that's essentially, the portion of those principal and interest payments that we would allocate to the contract, the entities contracted with the fire department for fire protection services would be, would be less, that amount, because we're expending fewer principal and interest payments because the loan is smaller.
Okay, so we're talking loan interest, basically?
Correct. The payments, the payments on the debt that we've incurred to buy the ladder truck.
Okay. Is that your understanding?
Yes. And in 2024, it is our, it is the last payment on the firehouse that will drop off, but then the fire truck, the ladder truck will come on, so it's not going to fluctuate anywhere significantly for the townships.
Fantastic, thank you.
But we don't, you don't have that dollar amount, though, and that would obviously vary depending on the outcome of this motion, like whether it's-
What the principal and interest payments will be.
Right, what the payment would be, yeah.
Right, we won't be able to know until we either execute a local loan or it gets, when it's rolled, if it gets rolled into our bonding that we'll do later this year.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Waters, did you want to attempt to revise your motion?
Sure, I'll revise the, the ARPA funds for the city of approximately $271,000 to, to simply state the remaining ARPA funds to be used to fund a portion of this purchase.
I'll second that.
Does that give you the clarity that you're seeking?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, so can we have a roll call vote, please, on the motion to use the remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds and any interest that may accrue toward the purchase of the fire department ladder truck? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler? No. Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Okay. Our last item in open session is Ordinance 1261, amending City Code Chapter 27 related to boards, committees, and commissions. This is our third reading, so, Mr. Dick, could you read that for us?
Ordinance 1261, amending Chapter 27 Boards, Committees, and Commission, Article 1 Board of Review, Section 27-1 Membership, Article 2 Library Board, Section 27-5 Membership, and Section 26-6 Organization, Article 4 Zoning Board of Appeals, Section 27-11 Establishment Membership, and Section 27-12 Organization and Meetings, Article 8 Economic Development Commission, and Section 27-3 Organization, and Section 27-24 Membership.
Thank you. So that completes our third reading. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 1261?
I'll move to adopt Ordinance 1261 as written.
Second.
Willkommen by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Mr. Waters. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call on Ordinance 1261? Ms. Curler? Aye. Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, recommendations for future agendas, we have a couple items that are carrying over from this evening. Anything else, Mr. Daley, on your list?
The ones mentioned in my, in my report, so we will have a presentation on the new dam, dam management plant policy, and then the RFPs for planning and engineering at the next meeting.
Okay. And as I mentioned, I've got some appointments for the Board of Review that I'm lining up, so that'll be at one of our next couple of meetings. Mr. Waters?
I just wanted to, to mention something that we had talked about in the past, and I apologize, I haven't been keeping up with the Planning Commission and what they might be working on at this point, but it was the, the discussion that we had a proposal regarding different housing situations and maybe modifying our code to work within that, within that. I was just wondering if there was any progress being made on that or where that stands at this point?
Yeah, the Plant Commission tasked staff with identifying some of the areas in that proposal and bringing back more specific information about them. So the, they did receive the, the report, and they wanted some additional information on, it was, I think, difficult to wrap their, all their arms around the entire thing, and so they've asked us to bring back some, some ideas for, for consideration in, in smaller chunks. So we're, staff is working on identifying those specifically related to like bulk requirements and things of that nature, and working through those with the Plant Commission.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bishop? I was looking back at my notes from the public comments, and maybe a draft resolution for the next meeting in regard to the presentation about the DM, a discussion alongside that with, sorry, I didn't take good notes on it, so, with a proposal for the council to petition the DNR for changes to the dam levels, particularly making the, increasing the amount of time in the spring and fall that we can keep precipitation in the lake.
Yeah, there will be-
You're nodding your head, you know what I'm saying? So, some kind of resolution for that, for discussion, maybe? And then, I think we would need a separate resolution for a environmental study as well, because that seems like it's the first step.
Right, so there's a few moving pieces there, and Patricia's just- Right, so there's a few moving pieces there and Patricia, Patricia Cicero's department is involved in well, is that there, they will be at that council meeting as well, providing information to the council on what they can undertake. We have a kind of a scope of work from the DNR of what would be required for that environmental study and talking with Patricia, the, the county may be able to accomplish much of that or all of it at no to low cost for the city. So we will have, we'll have the dam management policy, which will include recommended changes to how we operate the dam within the existing water level order, and then there will also be an opportunity for the council to discuss and potentially act on formally requesting a water level order change as well as working with the county to undertake the environmental study that will be required before the DNR would act on any request for water level order change.
Okay, what you just said, thank you. I would like for those to definitely be included in the conversation for the next meeting. I wasn't sure if that was contemplated or not, so, okay, thank you.
And just a follow-up, there was something in public comment and I didn't have enough of a recollection to want to, you know, question the comments, but my recollection is that Rock Lake Improvement Association has advocated, and they did tonight, for us to seek a change in the water level order. I don't think that was a recommendation from the Joint Rock Lake Committee. I thought that they had simply recommended that we update the dam management order within the, you know, and maximize the flexibility within the order. So that was one of the choices that we had before us, but I don't think it was recommended by Joint Rock Lake Committee. So anyway, maybe it's a minor point, but...
I don't recall.
Okay.
I apologize. I, I know it was mentioned in their report, but I can't recall the specifics of their recommendation.
And we had that as one of our choices last fall, but we didn't choose to do that, at least not initially, so, okay. But obviously, like you said, people are still interested in that, so we should keep it in the discussion.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we got recommendations and presentations. I don't know that we ever had a discussion item on whether we were going to do that or not, whatever that is.
I believe we did last October, but I'll have to go back and we'll get it and, but so Eric and Drake, I think, are, are working on this a lot, so they probably can refresh us on, yeah, what we talked about previously and make sure those are still part of the conversation. Thanks for, for bringing that up. Okay.
So as a point of order, it might be good for all of us to go back and review that meeting before next meeting?
Good idea.
Does anyone have a date on that meeting?
It was one of the ones in October. I don't remember which October meeting, but it was one of the October meetings where we did that. Okay, are we ready to go on to item 10? Okay, so agenda item 10 is to convene into closed session to discuss TID-7 development opportunities pursuant to Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, and to discuss the city manager employment agreement pursuant to Section 19.851C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data on any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mrs. Bishop, to move into closed session. All in favor, please raise your hands. That's a vote of five oh. Can we do that by hand raise?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a vote of five oh, so we are moving into closed session. We'll reconvene, but that will be off the camera, so that's the end of our broadcast tonight. Thank you.